I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I see no public discussion. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated August twenty ninth, twenty three? Plath? Specker? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Carter did say that he would be available if we needed to talk to him about anything during the meetings.
Who was that?
Carter. So he said if we had any questions or maybe anything from him, we could contact you.
Okay. Everybody had a chance to look at the claims in your iPad? Any discussion on the claims before we have a motion?
He did have one question he had as a citizen, um, ask about the thirty thousand dollar drone that was in the paper. Um, or thirty thousand dollar drone nurse payment, and I did respond to him this morning and let him know that that was emergency management homeland security program. So, um, yeah, I did give him that. That's, that's old, but just to let me know.
Okay.
Anything else on claims? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the claims. Wacker, second by Plath? Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. That woman with the two first names. Come on up. Okay, twenty whole years.
Oh.
You got, you got twenty more.
I started when I was ten.
You got twenty more?
Uh, no.
Oh, come on. You're doing good. Yeah, I'll shake your hand. We'll let you get a picture. Maybe, please. Thank you. Thank you very much for your service.
You're welcome. Thank you. Enjoyed it.
Good.
As long as they're shorter than my knee, yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Burns not coming in?
He's not gonna make it. So I'll bring that, get that certificate to him, Roger.
Want me to take a picture of you?
No, thank you. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Eric.
Uh, we are up to medical examiners. Everybody had a chance to look in their folder about the medical examiner and adding one?
Adding, do a little.
Yeah.
That was gonna be my question, who we were adding to. I got the files.
Yeah, I would make a motion to affirm the motion on the iPad? Is that Zach Plath?
Yes.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are up to set date and time for bid opening of county le- farm lease bids and approved publication notice.
Yeah, Roth, Roth recalled me. He just wanted to be clear on that. Now, how we're gonna do it? Anybody that puts a bid in will have a chance to raise it or only those with the highest bidder. How, how we're gonna do it?
Last time, if I remember, um, if I read right, or here on the notice, after the bids have been opened, the three highest bidders of the sealed bids will be allowed to increase their bids.
Okay.
So the three-
Did Roth know that?
Yeah, I will, um, call him. He wanted to know when the date was, so I'll call him today and see if he has an email. He wants me to send this notice.
Yeah, he, he just wants to know how we're gonna do it to make sure that, you know, how, who has a chance to raise the bid.
Yep.
Cause that was the question was, you're still, we're still gonna stand firm on not allowing organic farming. And I told him, I think, but I'm pretty sure that's true. We're not gonna let organic farming. He's just, I can't agree with that.
I, I'm in favor of not having organic farming on the county farm.
Well, I am too.
But, I mean, um, Specker, Wacker, what are your opinions?
I guess I don't know enough about the organic farming to really make a decision on it.
You get a lot of weeds.
Yeah, I mean, when we talked about it before, I, in general, agree with that, um. But if that's gonna be our stance, do we need to have that in the notice?
This is the same notice that was used last time?
Yeah.
We just changed the date.
Yeah, but I, we wouldn't have had that as a requirement the last time. And do we have to allow people to raise their bids?
I think if we had before, you know, we would need, need to continue that, just.
We don't have.
I don't know.
But sometimes.
I guess there's two ways to look at it. You could get people getting in a bidding war, but you could also have people lowball it and just think they're gonna, they're gonna raise it as low as possible, so.
Well, she said the three highest, so if they lowball it, they're probably gonna be out anyways.
If there's, if there's other competition. If there's three people that bid on it, they'll increase.
I know it's worked, you know, the last few times that we've done it, it's worked good. It happened, we got, that guy's ways are good.
Do you remember, did you remember what we got last time?
She wouldn't have been.
You, I, did you?
I, I can go grab the folder.
I haven't remember what we rented it out for.
Yeah, I just looked at it.
Off the top of my head, I don't remember either.
But now that you ask, that just blew out of my head. Um, I can go grab that file quick if you'd like me to.
What, if we got time, I'd kinda like to know what we got last time. I thought it was three fifty.
No, no, it was definitely not over thirty.
Two seventies.
That's kinda cheap.
I don't think it was over three hundred.
Hmm.
I don't remember what the CSR there is or anything.
It's a decent farm.
Two hundred and seventeen, two forty, I guess.
Short two forty.
Yeah.
And the buildings are out, just got furicized building spot. Hasn't Roth or got it the last two times? I think.
So it's there.
Oh, yeah. I guess I jumped right over it. Yeah, it does already, it does have in the notice as conditions to not organically farm. I skipped right in.
So the last one, this is the contractor of the last one.
Two eighty-six.
Oh, yeah. I almost think it was like two seventy something.
Two eighty-six an acre.
Okay.
Well, they did real well on farming.
They did real, real well on that, with seven dollar corn and sixteen dollar beans.
Yeah. And that was a three-year lease too, right?
Yeah, correct.
So everybody wanna do it on a three-year lease again?
Okay, sure.
Then they can fertilize it accordingly.
So what you want to do it, dance, then what?
Um, I have in there to, um, have the bids into the auditor by Monday, October second at four P M. And to open the bids at eight thirty-five A M. on Tuesday, October third.
Oh.
Open on October third?
Yes.
I'd move that to next day's.
Does that include putting the publication notice in the paper?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you gonna put it in the Algonquin paper in the reminder?
Sure.
Um, we usually just do that Algonquin paper and the two northern papers.
Bankrupt and twice.
In Sway City.
Yeah, I don't think it's ever going in the reminder.
We are keeping the bidding part in, that they're able to raise their bid.
I think your motion was as is.
Yep.
I'll second.
Does it cost a lot more to put it in the reminder? I'm just curious.
I don't know. I could ask about that.
It, it wouldn't be one of our official newspapers. That's why it wouldn't go there.
Yeah, I know, but more people get the reminder than get the Algonquin paper. My uh, everybody gets a reminder.
Yeah.
Just an idea.
Well, that's, maybe we need to discuss having it as an official. So we can use them.
Well, yeah.
You only have to have-
This add a lot of, you add a lot of publication costs.
Yeah, this is something different than official publication. This is
Yeah.
Cause when we sell trucks or anything, we put that in the reminder. We don't put that in the Algonquin paper.
Okay, good.
Actually, technically, because of Cusick County population, we only have to have two.
Yeah. It's up to you, Tammy. I don't care.
It's up to you guys. You tell me if, if you wanna add that as part of your motion, otherwise I'll just leave it the same.
Okay, it'd be beneficial to reach more people. Maybe we get more bids that way.
I, I, I think probably most people that are interested in this would already know it's coming up, but I, I'm not opposed to it either way.
We could add it to our website if we'd like to. I don't know how many people would get it.
I don't know how many people would get it either.
There's probably a decent amount of people that are on there. I, I would say the website would be fine.
We'll leave the motion as it stands. Everybody in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I will have you put it on our website too.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't cost anything.
Yeah.
We are up to discussion decision on the Homestead Military Disallowances for twenty twenty-three. Any discussion?
Nope.
Pretty standard.
Now, do I have a motion to approve?
Opposed.
Plath?
Second.
Specker? Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. Oh, Manayakog Housing Trust Fund, um.
Okay, so they had, um, called us and asked, um, or sent a letter asking for their amount. I can't remember which it was. And then, um, when they found out that you guys had only approved fifteen hundred instead of three thousand, they were concerned about that amount. So they have written a letter, which is in your packets, explaining why, um, they would like you to reconsider the fifteen hundred to three thousand. Um, if you approve it, we add it to our budget amendment.
It's, does a lot of good. It helps a lot of the poorer people upgrade their houses. That three thousand is multiplied many times over by government grants.
I'd move to prove it, add it to the budget amendment.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
I feel like there was a reason we made that reduction in the budget time, trying to think.
Well, one of them, one of the things is that, uh, the co-ops, electric co-ops used to manage it and run it, and they had money to it, and they quit. And that was one of the reasons, but, and they thought it was going to fold, but it hasn't pulled, and Manaykog's been keeping up with it, so.
So, what did the state change? Because in this letter, they talked about state funding, um.
The state hasn't changed much on the funding.
For a critical match for state funding, we're kind of, we're close to.
It's harder to get, but.
Now, we believe that raising county support from fifteen hundred to three thousand would significantly bolster our capacity to tackle crucial progress and drive change. It's the only thing I could see that was for the state.
I think if I remember right, Kyle, part of the problem was homework is who we used to give the money to. Um, and we weren't, and you guys weren't sure that, that Manaykog was gonna be ready to take on this responsibility or knew how much they were gonna be doing with it.
Okay.
Yeah, cause homework is homework.
Yeah.
I guess I, I don't know. I'd like to have a little more details here, cause I don't know.
Well, we'll do a roll call vote.
Okay, uh, Plath?
Yes.
Wacker?
Yes.
Specker?
I abstain.
Dex?
Yes, motion carried.
Okay, I will, I will let them know that.
Okay, we'll put it on.
We'll add it to the budget amendment.
Approved date and time for the F Y twenty-three, twenty-four budget amendment hearing.
So I did put a folder, um, in your, um, board folders, um, called working budget amendment. That kinda gives you an idea of where we're at right now. Um, for the budget amendment, I did get an email from Doug Miller that he's gonna have to add, um, secondary road, um, to that too. I haven't talked to him yet. Um, the, the areas that are highlighted in yellow are the amounts for the, um, line item numbers that we're still working on. Um, I just need to talk to Phil about the amounts that he wants for Sway City rent, um, the revenue for EMS for races and CPR classes. Um, we have to talk to Todd about what he thinks we're gonna bring in for national B eight settlements. And then, um, the sheriff's office did get a local grenade for fifteen hundred dollars from night vision. And so I need to find out from them if they're gonna use a regular line item to pay for that, or if they wanna add a new item for that. We will have a new revenue line item for that. Um, but I'm still working with department heads, but that's where we're sitting right now with that.
So, what date did you have in mind?
Um, so I'm looking at October third.
That's a full month away.
Yes, but we have to publish it for between ten and twenty days prior, so.
Do you have to publish the amounts or just?
This notice, this, um, resolution here, um.
The amounts are in the resolution?
Yeah, I think, I think that is it. I don't think, I can't remember, but yes, I believe the, um, amounts are published.
Is Doug gonna be able to get his together by then?
When do you have to actually send it to the papers?
Um, I think it's gonna be published nine twenty-one, so it'll be to the paper nine fifteen, so by next Friday.
Okay.
So that gives us some time, um, to work on it. And then, um, I have to go into the state system and do the amendment on their screen before I can, um, print it and publish it, so.
Do you wanna call those longer?
Yeah.
Can you go up next? Yeah.
We have a motion yet to set that?
And unless you think it needs to be done sooner or?
No, I don't think we can.
Hey, it's Kyle. We can come up to the boardroom whenever.
I believe the sector will be here.
Huh.
Big guy.
Yep, bye.
October third?
October third.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Nevermind.
October third at eight thirty-five, we're doing the.
Yeah, the, the budget, the amendment doesn't do.
It won't take that long.
Do we need more time if we don't have all these, like, roads and other things, if we don't actually have them ready yet? Do we need more time?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have to have this done by a certain time for certain projects or?
No, just, we need to do it this year before the end of the year, we're gonna not be able to get the gas tax.
Well, the, the HVAC we have to have done now because they're
Yeah.
asking for payment, and we, um, put that HVAC money in our budget, because it wasn't finished in last fiscal year's budget. So that, that we have to get done quickly.
Okay. That's why I was curious if there was-
Yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons why we have to do it now.
We will do one more budget amendment before the year's over.
Yes, and the other thing I wanted to mention about the budget amendment is in there is a line for K nine for sheriff. Um, he, I talked to you earlier about this, or a couple of weeks about this, but he, he thought that the K nine was a budgeted line item. We didn't realize it was done by donations. Um, so he is asking now for the K nine to be part of the regular budget instead of being funded by donations. He had said that if you want him to come in and talk to you about that prior to the amendment, Hammer Deputy Mark McGregor would be happy to do that. We just would need to let him know about it.
Okay.
So they wanna fund it through the county instead of the donation?
Correct.
That's not gonna stop them from being able to take donation for it, correct?
Correct. They still be able to take donations.
Come on in.
Have you done any one yet?
Yes.
What was that? I didn't even see it was on there.
It was an addition for, um, Doolittle.
Doolittle.
Yeah, Doolittle.
I figured that's what it was, but I hadn't seen anything.
Yeah, it added you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So we have seconded the motion yet?
No.
No. So who made the motion? I didn't.
Plath.
Plath did. For October third?
At eight thirty.
I'll second the motion. Discussion on the motion, when to set a time and date for the public hearing on the budget amendment? Any questions or any comments?
Somebody had a question. Well, Doug is gonna be ready by that time. Budget amendment, October third?
Um, which should be, uh, this is the one with Tammy last week, and this is a little bit more this week. When do you need it? Need to find figures.
Well, we have to have it to the paper by the fifteenth, which means I have to put it in the system for the department of management. So, next week, so any-
Ten days, we, I mean, we have time.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving the time and date for the budget amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. I think we are up to road construction.
Oh, we have no request for construction, the road right away.
Well, then we will go to discussion with our county engineer and zoning administrator.
Uh, construction, uh, we're waiting to hear when they're going to be doing shouldering. We have all the approaches, driveways, uh, that were completed. Uh, they just need to come in and do their shouldering. We're hoping it's sometime this week and then follow up with traffic marching. On the bridge project, uh, south of Tyke, they should be pouring concrete, uh, for their north pier and north apartment. So, if they could form that up in two weeks, we should be getting a pour in two to three weeks, I would assume. Get things, uh, cured and ready for traffic.
They might make it before harvest?
Maybe.
Maybe.
We'll see. Yeah, it's not gonna make any guarantees. Uh, the Irvington Bridge, they're doing some work today. They had put in some patches on that, and they were not, they didn't get enough asphalt in it, so they will be getting that completed. And the Seneca Gun Club, that is all completed now. Uh, D sixty lateral one, we talked a little bit about foam up there at Eismann's. Foam company did get that, uh, uh, back and connected. And the Algonquin Airport, uh, they did push that construction back, uh, to September eighteenth. And the pavement is placed at the bridge, the state bridge, south of, um, Fenton. So that should be opened up shortly, I would think. Get strength and then get that shoulder on there, and then everything should be done. Um, looking to start interviewing for some positions. Uh, this week, our operators are working ten-hour days. Next week, they return to five, eight-hour days for their work week. I received a call from Garrett Wilson, Globe Heritage Life. What he wants to visit with Secondary Road employees.
So Donna-
I mean, he wants to, he wants to individually speak with them during working hours, and I'm not gonna allow that.
Donna did send him an email after she had heard that he was in the courthouse talking to employees. She did send him an email reminding him that the board approved for him to talk during open enrollment. And that we would leave, um, information would be accessible to employees if they wanted to contact him on his own time. So he did say that he understood that, so hopefully, he won't be contacting you anymore until-
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then, uh, transfer station manager, at this time, I have one application for that. I plan to get that interview taken and get a person hired. Is the board going to appoint the person I recommend?
You only had one application?
That's correct.
If the process was taken care of.
You will? I mean, the process is, I, I advertised in three papers. It's been ten days. It's been on the bulletin boards for ten days. Is that the process?
That's our policy.
Okay, because this is the first time, in fact, I think that you seconded, in last November, you seconded the, uh, the appointment of the manager, so.
I wasn't aware of that time, that we didn't follow our own policy.
Okay.
We should have.
All right. Well, we'll take care of that then. Other than that, I don't have anything to visit with the board.
Um, one ninety, whatever happened with that, out there with Brian Foreman?
Uh, I'm gonna be talking with our road foreman. Supposed to allow me with him about that, so we can take care of the road. Uh, I'm gonna be talking with our road foreman, supposed to allow me with him about that, so we can take care of the road. But the road is only, I think it's forty feet of road right away.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on north of that, so.
Want to get more, no.
Yep, I can do it, Mike.
You want to meet you?
No, I can do it. I need to stretch my wings anyway.
Can you grab us some water?
It's only eight thirty.
I took my wa, my blood pressure feels like it's six though.
So they're working?
Well, that's positive.
It's quiet?
It's quiet.
Well, compared to last week, this is, this is kinda nice.
Yeah.
Okay, quiet.
We probably would've had thirty-some people here last week.
Oh, the Jews were over.
Yeah, that's what I was just counting, I didn't, didn't count.
Yeah, we had thirty-some.
Low thirties, but yeah.
Low drainage requests, Marj?
No.
Did the engineer Jacobs and Westergaard, didn't he retire? I'll think of his name when I don't need to.
Yeah, so then.
Rick Hopper.
Yeah, Rick.
Rick Hopper, yeah, and then Colin.
Colin Klingbauer is the engineer, I did rec retire though?
I think so.
Okay, I thought so, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure.
I heard that he hung it up.
And then Carter had talked to Colin, so.
Colin is now their head engineer? They're getting Iceman signed up, Marj?
Oh, I haven't heard any updates.
Yeah, got three more this week.
What are the, they have percentage wise?
Not very many.
Oh, small.
Almost north. Navigator, I saw it.
Yeah, but they were, I mean, they were almost a quarter before.
Yeah, so they added three more.
Well, depending on which three, that's, I mean.
I don't, I didn't ask which three, they added. It's not as contentious. We are up to appoint Jacobsen and Westergaard as engineer for P K one open ditch repairs.
I'd make a motion to appoint it, appoint Jacobsen, Westergaard.
I'll second.
Nah?
Whacker.
Or whacker, I mean, yep, I'll get a W out of an N. Any uh discussion on it? Hearing done? Do a roll call vote?
Platte.
Yes.
Whacker.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. Motion carried unanimous. Anything else, Marj, on it? You wanna send him a letter or a phone call or whatever you're gonna do? To have him get started, having a moment.
Oh, this, yeah, yeah, I'll do the phone call, and then try email.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah. Probably be nice if. They'd share the report that they did on it originally.
Golden, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they will.
Carter, I do, Dr. Colin, and David, as soon as I let him know, I'll get a hold of Tyler and look at the junk.
Yeah, and I talked to Tyler about it before, he said they would share their information, so that's not gonna be a problem.
Especially the drum would itch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they'll, they'll work, work on that efficiently, so they won't have to redo stuff.
Anything else from Marj? If not, we are up to our time with the county auditor.
Um, so next week, we have Secondary Road Foreman, T C three Health Center, monthly report, um, and that's all I have on the agenda for next week, so.
Just keep it that way.
Okay, that, that, I think, that's beautiful. I know, isn't that crazy?
Well, it's not the shortest one we've had.
Yeah, we have that short one.
Three-minute one.
Oh, wrecking it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll take that back, yeah, or some special ones.
I don't, I don't think we'll beat that.
So, um, we didn't have the handbook on um this week's agenda because um we haven't had a chance to get hold of E L S and P M. Um, so once we get a hold of them and find out from them, but I did find um some sample um handbooks that they've done for other counties. And the information that we're questioning having in our handbook, that the other welfare provision is in the other handbook, so I don't know if we might not have an issue.
There'll be some.
So, yeah, so uh, once we talk to them, then we'll put the handbook back on the, on the agenda, but uh, we'll set up a time to do that. And then um, that is all I have. I'm gonna be gone Thursday and Friday, Melissa and I are both gonna become seat three certified, um, and that's election training. And only auditors and election deputies can be seat three certified, which is the highest level of election training, so we will be gone Thursday, Friday for that.
Sounds good, that's this week?
Yes.
Jack, did you have anything last week?
No. Nope, nothing.
Stacker?
I didn't have any board meetings, but there, there is a public comment thing down in Des Moines tomorrow for. I don't even know the best way to describe it, but one of the things that encompasses workforce development boards, um, but it's. I think it's kinda in line with the governor's reorganization bill, there's like more they're trying to do, and I'm still um. I'm gonna try and wrap my head around that a little more yet today, but I do know some other supervisors that are going down to that to comment at it, so I'll have to. See what I can figure out with that, but that's tomorrow. I think that's all I got.
I didn't have any committees last week, next week, we have Nyacog. That's about it.
I was supposed to have a third judicial district um meeting Friday, but we decided to cancel it because of the new advisory style that the board is in, and. It's just not a whole lot of updated information for now, so decided to cancel that one.
Okay.
Anything else to come before the good of Kasuth County? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose.